Please do me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President, before we begin, we have a moment of silence. Should be okay. Before we begin this evening's meeting, I would like to ask everyone to join me in a moment of silence. This month has been filled with great loss and challenges from national tragedies to personal griefs that have touched many of us. If we can, let's take this moment to reflect on those affected by these difficult times and honor the lives lost, the struggles faced, and the strength of communities that continue to persevere. Please join me in the listen.
Thank you so much.
Yes, please continue.
Thank you for everybody being here for the Monday, September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting in the Southwestern City School Board. Can I get a roll call, please? Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Here.
Ms. Siskini.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Ms. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Bosso. Here. Moving on now to adoption of the agenda. The Director Committee of Education adopted the agenda for September twenty-second, two thousand twenty-five of the regular board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve?
September.
Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Can I get a second?
Second. Angela Steele.
Thank you. Any additions or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Siskini.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Moving on now for approved minutes from our September eighth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. The Director Committee of Education approved the meeting minutes for September eighth, two thousand twenty-five meetings as attached. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
So moved. Siskini.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
Second. Peterson.
Thank you. Roll call.
Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. D'Angelo Steele.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. Well, we're going to have three presentations this evening. Our first is going to bear school spotlight with Galloway Ridge Intermediate with Dr. Angela. Please.
Let's go.
Good evening, President Bosso, Vice President Angela Steele, members of the board, Mr. Banks, Mr. Garci. Thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity to showcase the great things that are happening at Galloway Ridge. When I put this together, I thought I had like fifteen minutes, and so I was like, and then all of a sudden it was, oh, no, you have five. Okay. So I wanted to, I wanted to first start off with our, where we are with our academic growth, which is first and foremost why we are here. That's, can I say next slide? Next slide. Sorry. Okay, so I am happy to report that at Galloway Ridge in literacy math, we are meeting our growth expectations. More so, twenty percent of our sixth graders are currently above proficient in writing, which is a ten percent increase from where we were last year, which is a tremendous source of pride for us. Additionally, I'm happy to report, you know, we have twenty-five percent of our students are limited English proficient. Our fifth graders have scored higher than state and district averages on the most recent level of testing, and we have exited the highest number of students out of that program in any other building in the district. So we're working really hard for those students. On top of academic growth, we take a look at teacher professional development because developing teachers is what allows us to grow students. We've done a tremendous amount of professional development for our teachers this past school year. Our literacy coach has engaged in what we're calling a residency, where she was pushing into multiple classrooms throughout the year to strengthen our teachers' knowledge of literacy programming. We are embedding two times monthly professional development that is focused on small groups in our classroom because those small groups are how we do grow students. We need them where they are every day. And then additionally, we are this year working towards small group instruction in math as well to be able to do those same type of differentiated programs in the classroom, again to meet, meet all of our students where they're at. Another tremendous source of pride for us is the work we've done this past couple of years with parent and community engagement. Our students are working with the Franklin County Dog Shelter to do some outreach and bring in resources for, for the pups. That's something our student council has chosen to do on their own. And then at the end of the year, they go there and bring the donations and, you know, help out. They clean cages, they play with the dogs, they enjoy it. Currently, we also have a partnership with Children's Hunger Alliance to provide food boxes for families and students in need. And I'm a little old school, so we partner with Franklin County Dare Program to continue that program in higher school. And then finally, most recently, we are working this, this past two years with Columbus Parks and Rec Center Without Walls Program to bring a free after-school program to thirty of our students. This year, we're going to try to grow it to forty. We have the capacity. It's a matter of getting Parks and Rec to find another site coordinator for us. So we, we're really happy with that program. As it relates to bringing in families into our building, we do a tremendous amount of things. We have Student of the Nine Weeks Breakfast, where parents come in and showcase, we get to showcase the, the work of their students. We are, we celebrate the diversity that, you know, is our building on the West Side by, with a multicultural night that we're very proud of. And this year, we are adding a family reading night and a family STEM night because we want to bring in more academic components and share those with our families. And then, oh, opportunities for student support. So we have a student council that gets bigger and bigger each year. Our students have an opportunity to participate in our news organization called the Galloway Gazette. And then we have several outside organizations that we partner with. Project Drain, one, where students do service work and leadership work. We also have two new programs that we are showcasing this year. One is called the Outlet Program, where we are going to pool three cohorts of students twice weekly to work on life skills. And also Seeds of Caring, which will be our sixth grade students having tabletop discussions about things that impact them through student-led conversations of things that impact them throughout the course of their day. And then finally, and you know, when I was building this, it felt kind of backwards because I, we're doing great things for kids and that needs to be showcased. But I think the thing that we're most proud of at Galloway Ridge is how we got there. So our journey, and you know, when I was putting, when I was putting this slide together, you know, they, they say a picture is worth a thousand words. You don't, you don't say in words and numbers what you can say in photos. But these facts and these words are something that is a tremendous source of pride for our staff, and I would be remiss to not include them in this presentation. So for three straight years in a row, we've reduced our disciplinary incidents from one thousand one hundred and forty-seven incidences in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two to six hundred and forty-eight last year. So the kids are staying in class more, which is where they need to be. We have three straight years of increased teacher attendance. So in school year twenty-one, twenty-two, we had one thousand eight hundred and forty-five incidences where teachers were absent. We've reduced that by more than half over the course of three years. And last year, I'm happy to report, we only had eight hundred and three reported absences. And finally, teacher retention. So we have increased our teacher retention at Galloway Ridge from seventy-five to ninety-five point eight. I want my, my point two percent earlier. And you know, and, and that's significant because, you know, by increasing teacher retention, we are much more able to provide a better, you know, package of service for our kids. You know, that we're able to bring teachers in, they won't stay at Galloway Ridge. They spend time, you know, seeking professional development, honing their instructional craft, and then they're able to deliver that to the students. Through that teacher retention, you know, we're able to build capacity to put groups together for kids and support families. And you can't do that as effectively when you have a revolving, revolving door of, of staff. So, so those three things are what got us where we are today. You know, our, our kids are, they're in class more, they have better connections with teachers. We have three straight years, again, of teacher attendance, so our teachers are coming to work. And then on top of that, they are, they're staying at Galloway Ridge. So, so that's, you know, what, why we're able to deliver the, the service that we're able to deliver. And, you know, the staff and students have worked really, really hard this year to, to make that change. So I just wanted to show this.
Do you have any questions?
First of all, this is more just a comment about the, the three straight years of reduced disciplinary incidents. And I just think that that's really impressive because you look at your data that year following COVID, and I mean, that was a tough year to be able to see the decrease every year than until last year, being able to reduce that so significantly. So good job for being able to move us past that hard year. And then my other is a question, and that is just what's your secret for the teacher retention?
So I.
It really speaks to building culture, though.
So I, you know, not to quote Woody Hayes here, but I fundamentally believe you win with people. I'm a people person. And I, when I got to Galloway Ridge, you know, I saw a lot of, coming off that COVID year, just a lot of, I just broken down adults, I mean, to be honest. And I, I said to them, there's no way that you can pour into these students when you have nothing to give. And so I committed, you know, working with, well, I had worked previously with an outside organization in another district that worked on health and wellness and, you know, valuing teachers and adults more because I needed to fill their cups in order for it to spill over into our students. You know, there was no way that I could walk into a building of seven hundred kids and fix the problems, but I do have eighty-something adults. Let's start there. And, and then it continued to spill over. I just, it, it was a, an investment in the adults. They started investing in each other, they started supporting each other, and now they're supporting students and families.
Thank you for letting.
Awesome, awesome work. Numbers are so impressive. You're doing an amazing job there, and thank you so much for being here to share all of that. I was going to ask, what's your secret sauce? And that's it, investing in your, in your staff, and I love that. I'm just wondering if you could share a little bit more about the residencies, your literacy coaches? You have such a high number, the twenty-five percent of your BLL students. If you could share a little bit more.
What does the residency look like? Yeah. Okay, so our literacy coach picks, let's see, two, two teachers each quarter, and she spends basically her day in the classroom with them. You know, working on instructional practices, kind of like a team teaching kind of thing, where they are really entrenched in, in, in literacy instruction. So it, it's, it's very much a cooperative teaching situation. Again, it's, she does two per quarter. And then after she's done with that residency, then those, those two teachers kind of become a little cohort themselves to support other teachers, and it grows and gets bigger and bigger and bigger. They focus on things, you know, like small group instruction, but probably more importantly, our kids are, come to us with a deficit in, in their knowledge base. And so in fifth and sixth grade, a lot of the teachers kind of have more of, I guess, what I would like to call middle school mindset. You know, in, in education, you initially teach kids to read, and then at a certain point, you transition from reading to, to learning, right? So the fact, our teachers didn't have a ton of foundational skills that they needed to be able to impart just knowledge, like CDC words, consonant, vowel consonant words. So just those tiny little moments that a lot of the teachers at the elementary level have because that's where those kids are developmentally. So you know, when you have fifth and sixth graders that are first, second grade reading level, you need to hone a different skill set to, to bring them along, to get them, to get them reading. And so she was able to go in to those classrooms and have, like, a teacher have one small group going, she would have a small group going, and then they were able to fill those gaps a little quickly because of that saturation of the professional development. And then really through those, that residency, through those experiences with our instructional coach, our literacy coach in that classroom, she was able to see, you know, what the kids were, what, what they were doing, what their struggle with was in real time, and then was able to, we were able to plan whole school professional development about what she was seeing in those, in those smaller classrooms.
Love that. Thank you. I like that you said the, the real time because for kids, it's key to get it in real time.
It is.
For them to put the connection because then when too much time passed, they're not even for sure what they missed. Connect.
Yeah, we, we really started hitting hard engagement. Because unfortunately, when, especially when you get into, you know, fifth and sixth grade, kids know they can't read.
Yes.
And that's, that's challenging. So you have, and they also know when they're reading the tiny little books. They know when they're reading those little first grade, second grade books, and they don't want to do that. And, you know, kids would rather act up than look dumb. And so, as they say. And so for us, it was how, how can we fast-paced instruction? How can we keep them tactile, hands-on, connected with an adult? And so that they're engaged while they're continuing to learn.
Absolutely. Continue to build their confidence. And I like that you said old school with the deer. When I seen the deer, I was like, ah! I remember deer, I grew up on deer. So keeping it old school is always good, a little sprinkle in there.
Thank you. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
I, you've been, remind me, you've been at Galloway Ridge for how long now?
This is my fourth year.
Fourth year, okay, that's what I thought.
Fourth of change.
Fourth of change, okay. That's what I thought you were, the newer, newer one at the time when I first met you. So it's just, I'm just always an old, it's amazing.
It's not me, it's them. I just showed them what to do, they, they knew what I, I.
That's amazing.
Got to have leadership. I always enjoy coming over to see you.
We enjoy having you.
Thank you so much for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, Nancy.
Have a good night.
You too. Next, we're going on to the second presentation, the Board of Education Goal Updates. We've got behavior, and we're going to have Brian Bowser, Dr. Brian Bowser, Dr. Eric Hui, Dr. Cheryl Spain, and Dr. Dan Gerro. And facilities also, Monty Dever, next.
I guess I'll get us started here. Good evening, President Bosso, Vice President Angela Steele, members of the board, Mr. Banks and Mr. Garci. It's our pleasure tonight to, I'm getting feedback, or is it just me? Sorry. Just to bring you an update about one of the board's priorities surrounding behavior. And what a great leadoff with Galloway Ridge talking about some of the success they've had and one of the stories, the many stories that are happening throughout the district. I think before the executive directors come up and showcase some of our work, I just want to set the stage of where we've been. Thanks, Evan. So last spring, we did a quick survey and we reported out to you. We met with each leadership team in the building to say, what's going well, what's not? And then we spent summer, we came, August seems like forever ago, but we spent an entire day with our administrative team talking about what those feedback sessions said, and then what are our plans to move forward? I think it's important to set the groundwork here about what behavior and discipline really are. You know, discipline is rooted in the Latin word, to teach. That's what it means. And so when you talk about discipline, it becomes complicated because you have to now only have guardrails and expectations, but you also have to teach behavior. And so those two things, which Dr. Urban spoke about so eloquently, have to work continuously. And the other reality about this idea of behavior, we are always going to have it. Our business is one hundred percent about people. And so the fire chief, for example, would never say, this year, we're having no fires. It's not going to happen. We know we will have behavior, but what I do know is our buildings are rallying around each other, as you heard, about to support children and teach them the way that we want them to behave, and at the same time, set expectations so we create environments where everyone can learn. And so with that, I'm going to be quiet and invite Dr. Gerro up, and they're going to kind of share by level some of the things that are underway in each of our buildings, and allow you to time to ask questions.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. Slide. We're just twenty-three days into school, and families are in charge, and that's with their five-year-olds to ten-year-olds. Every single day, they come through our doors. Many kindergartners, even some first and second graders, haven't even stuck their foot in classroom yet, which is hard to believe. They're learning how to thrive in a place that we call school. For the majority of our students, the starting's been amazing. Wonderful smiling faces skipping down the hallways. But for some of our youngest learners, especially those kindergarten students, the transition from home to school has been a real challenge. I've been in every school multiple times, and I want to recognize how outstanding our teachers are. They're doing an amazing job every day with these children. They're the hardest working group of people I've seen, and I can confidently say they're among our best in the state. I'm proud of them. The first weeks of school are about teaching routines, teaching expectations, and helping students feel safe, connected, and ready to learn. We know children can't learn unless they feel loved, cared for, and their needs are met, and that's our foundation. At our principal's retreat in August, we spent a lot of time talking about radically student-centered and what that means, and what it means to be anchored in, I will respect myself, I will respect others, and I will respect property, and how to get that feeling across to five-year-olds and ten-year-olds. These pictures highlight how our staff and our principals are leading with care and how students engage in, engage in that student-centered expectation consistently across our district. These represents most of our schools, but you can see that respect, respecting property, and respecting each other's throughout that. And I'm proud to say a lot of these are student-driven. If it's adult-driven, they often don't listen, but when it's student-driven, they believe in it. So that's where we are with our new issue.
Hello. Well, I wanted to thank you again for the leadership of the cell phones because we found that that is really going well. We actually have eighth graders talking to each other at once. We also have kids playing at recess. So these are all really good things in the middle grades, and we're enjoying that. The cell phone pieces, we've not had a lot of discipline, which has also been nice. I think starting out the way we're going to go eventually in line with the state laws has just been really helpful, so I wanted to set the stage there. We have a lot of building pride, and I'm going to refer you now to the slide. So we've got students who are helping out in classrooms and hallways picking up trash. We have the golden dustpan and the golden trash can happening places to keep classrooms clean and compete for prizes. We're doing safety things, like the vests that you see that are rattle and dismissal to help staff stand out and really have a presence at those times of the day. And then in the middle grades this year, our theme is good things happen here, and we're trying to use that all over the place. We see people wearing T-shirts, that's kind of our thing now. So lots of positive messages, like you're kind of a big dill. But lots of be respectful, be responsible everywhere, expectations of restrooms and hallways. We've got Gaga pits coming up in some of the buildings for things to do at recess. And then being kind above all is, is a message in the building. So we've got a lot of building focus on positive behavior, and I think things are going very well.
I am not four-nine, so. Thank you for the time to highlight some of the wonderful things that we're doing in the high schools. I mean, typically, it's unusual here that there's any behavior problems in the high schools, but we're talking a little bit about the strategies we're using to make sure it goes smoothly. When you take a look at the slide, there's a lot going on, and we believe at the high school level, as we do at all levels, that students ultimately do, they want to do the right thing. And when we create a culture and climate in a building that is positive, that is engaging, and that shows compassion and a consistent message, they rise to the occasion. We do want to make sure the facility's secure. So we have talked to SROs in depth. They are doing more circulating of the buildings. We have a lot of entrances and exits because of the size and the scope of our buildings and the layouts of the classrooms inside and outside the actual school facility. So we are checking, making sure that the doors are secure and safe as much as possible. At the Career Academy, one of the interesting things they're doing is they have brought in an author, Alexis Reed, who has written the book Supporting Student Executive Functions. And we know we have a lot of students that struggle with executive functions, and that is how to regulate their emotions and behaviors. So the entire school is doing a book study. The author's coming in person to work with the staff, and they are also doing virtual modules with the author of the book, and then they are trying out strategies, coming back to meetings, having conversations about what's working, which I think is an excellent idea. We also want to make sure that we are recognizing students when they do the right things. So an example, all of our buildings have a positive behavior intervention system, and that's what we call PVEIS. But the comic card is something that was created this year at Central Crossing. Basically, students that do the right things and are achieving two of the following topics, and that's perfect attendance, zero discipline, honor roll, get exclusive rights to do special things. Some of that would be entrance to certain sporting events, musical events, dances, going into raffles for yearbooks, going into the school store, getting the treats that they all love. And that has been showing people, you think it's something so simple for a high school, the kids love it. So we're getting a lot of support there. We also know that at the high school, sometimes students want to be creative in the restrooms with their time. And we do know that there's been some vandalism in the past. We've really taken a hard stance on addressing some of that. So along with the E-Hall password, we know what students are out of what classrooms at what time and limit the number of students that can be doing that at a certain time. We have also stationed a lot of staff right outside. Not only they welcome the students in, you know, in a fashion where, you know, they're inducing themselves, they're having conversations, but they're letting them know that we're here, we're paying attention, and we're present. So that's important. You see the phone patty, as Dr. Spain shared, that cell phone policy has been going really, really well. Students are definitely engaging and more learning in the classrooms. I have been through, once a week, I'm in at least, all five buildings every week at least one time during that week. And in doing so, I'm in there between class changes in lunchrooms and in classrooms. And it is a significantly different feel with the engagement of instruction. From the teaching side to student side, there's a lot of positive feedback. We are getting more students, getting work completed. We're getting more students engaging in healthy conversations and producing. So that has been great. And one thing I will say before I go is we also, when buses come and drop off in the mornings, we want students to have something to do. So we have multiple schools that started multiple clubs for the first thirty, forty minutes of the school day. And students get off the bus, they go into the club, and we have staff that are willing to come and do that. So that's fantastic. In talking about that, I just want to share something really quick that just happened tonight, and then I'm going to stop. My daughter lives in a different district. She came and met me at the college track tonight. She was struggling to figure out what she wants to do, and she walks in the doors, and I introduce her to some counselors, some staff that are teachers there, some administrators, and some people from I know I can. And they just wrap themselves around her. They were interested, offered to help her with whatever she needed. And she said, you know, my district, you know, everybody thinks it looks really great on the inside, but yours is really great on the inside. So I just wanted to share that. With that, do you have any questions?
This is the, the one that walked around with the clipboard and the pencil?
This is her older sister, yeah.
Ah, what?
She's hitting her in the head with a pencil.
You know, I was just talking to, about the shoe reading about, I was, must've went in front of him at Westland High School the other. at Westland High School the other day. And I left there so overjoyed, I didn't see one cellphone. They were playing Uno in the lunchroom. And Mr. Costello said he's got to teach them how to shuffle cards. He says, nobody knows how to shuffle cards anymore. We deal with that at the firehouse too with all these young kids that come in. But I was overjoyed by what I seen all through that school. And then Eric said he walked through and didn't see one cellphone either. It added such a big thing to me. So thank you.
I love the morning club idea. A lot of kids get there early and half the time. And that was one of my questions for Dr. Spain, just how can we better support our middle grades with that free time? We don't know, you know, we think, oh, elementary recess, we're out playing on the playground. But what about our middle grades? You know, in high school, I know high schools, I see pictures of Legos and, you know, doing different fun things in their, in their free time. I guess I never really thought about that we would ever have this conversation. You know, people my age grew up, like, you just talk to each other at lunch, or you can talk to each other in Sunday hall, or you pass a note. But, you know, I feel like we're in, it's a different time, and kids are relearning those social skills without the cellphone. Just how can maybe we better support our teachers and our staff during the free time?
Well, to be honest, this is something that the principals have all been really working on. So we've been doing things like, I know it sounds kind of elementary, but painting zones on the playgrounds so that we have, this is the area where we're playing football, this is the area where we're playing basketball, that kind of thing. Lots of games, we've gotten lots of games. The Gaga pits are new, some places we're laying concrete, so we've been putting Gaga pits and working with Mr. Meadows on where and placement. But to be honest, kids are finding things to do, which is great. We didn't expect that. It was a, it was a serendipitous piece that we were just excited they were talking to each other. So to your point, we were worried about it, but I don't think we had to be because kids are finding ways. And then we're putting money back in balls and those tetherball poles and things like that. So it's been really good.
I know. Is resilience one of the words this year?
Resilience, yes.
One of the words. It's amazing because kids are so resilient. Students are amazing. You, they, you know, we should have high expectations for them, right? Like, they'll figure it out, they'll know what to do. I know a lot of kids, a lot of students were nervous before the first day. What are they going to do? What's going to happen? And then hearing from all of them and just how excited they are, they're talking more even outside of the classroom, even outside the buildings, they're not on the phones as much, they're doing more things. And it's just amazing. I know Mr. Bosso had this idea, what, three, four years ago, the no cellphone thing, and to see it come to fruition this strongly has just been, it's been really, really cool to experience everything. But what everybody's doing at all grade levels, it's really fun, so.
And I heard that kids are passing notes in class now, too.
Isn't that so great? I think they're going to make that little, what is that, little paper game? Pick line in the football?
Yes, what is that? Yeah.
What you created was kids, phones, some movement with hands. So what you created was you take something away, you give something. So by creating and coming up with the creativity of those games and Legos and puzzles and different things to do with the active movement of hands has now changed the mindset to do something else. And so that is what's been so critical. Mindset is good, puzzles, games, things like that for the memory.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Bosso, Vice President D'Angelo Steele, members of board. Coming into the 25, 26 school year, we were tasked with the goal of not only maintaining our facility's functionality and, you know, its general safety, but also improving that overall site appearance, improving that curb appeal, making these a sense of pride for, you know, staff and the community and all, you know, all of us, right? So we hit the summer hard, focusing on some of those things, figuring out what we could do to improve that and stay within, you know, our, our measures of what we can do. This first snapshot kind of gives you some bullet points and some kind of that general cadence of what goes into determining, you know, what is next, right? Some of the stuff is on a rotational basis, you know, whether that be yearly or biannually. But other stuff, you know, is just age and condition drives that, drives that force, right? Next slide. So one of the big tasks we wanted to take on this summer was with the opening of the Stiles, the new Stiles Family Resource Center. We quickly noticed some deficiencies out there in regards to not only safety, but general flow, parking. There was a lot of deficiencies out there that kind of, we honestly didn't like. So when the modulars left, we used that as an opportunity to kind of improve a lot of things out here. You can kind of see from the before map. The one, the first thing we noticed quickly during construction of the, of the new facility was the entire community basically used this facility as a shortcut to get to 270, whether that's coming from it or to it. So immediately we realized this is not going to work. I mean, I personally probably almost got hit out in the street. So we immediately installed some drive gates. So we have a gate, you can kind of see it on the one on the right with those kind of red lines. Those are the new, the new positions of the gates, and they stay closed 95% of the time. So we kind of cut off that corridor to 270 going to and from. And it was a big learning curve out there this summer. I, you know, had some very not-so-happy people with me. But I think we have kindly caught on, and the community has kind of, you know, the neighboring community has realized this is no longer a public street, this is a school facility. Once we got those in and the modulars were gone, we didn't have to, we didn't have a big blank slate, right? We could do what we want. So we not only increased the parking immensely, we were able to create a lot more driveline to create that kind of flow for not only Stiles but for Stiles Family Center, keep them isolated, keep them separate from each other, not get that kind of merge between the two, create a good way to keep buses still away from, away from the parents in the, in the drop-off lane. And also just, I mean, this, parking-wise out there, I think we gained over 50 parking spots. So whenever either site now is having some sort of event, or even if they have been simultaneously, we don't have that problem of there's not enough parking. This was one of our tightest parking spots in any campus out here in regards to folks and parking spots. This turned out very well. Coming into this fall, we'll see that nice little island area, and this will be complete. On top of that, we also relocated the playground that was adjacent to the old modulars. We didn't have enough time last year, so kind of had to stay there for last year. But now it is up and tight to the building, right outside, connected to the west side of the facility, and it is a nice upgrade. While we're getting into playgrounds, go back to that, please. We use that as an opportunity to then assess and, and improve other facilities, right? East Franklin, although that building was renovated in 2019, its playground for the time kind of had to stay put, budget and some other things drove that. But this year, we replaced the whole big, the main apparatus, new swings. It is a completely new renovated playground, so it is on par with some of our newer elementaries as well. The one on the right is Monterey. Monterey is unique as when that, that site was re-pressed in the face of two elementary buildings. It had some newer playgrounds in type, but they, they kept an older one out, out, out the way in the back, probably. Well, that one didn't get renovated with the rest of the site because it was in decent condition. But it, over time, it needed it as well, and that's the one you're seeing on the right. One thing we noticed at the high schools in particularly was sometimes with all the entrances, sport entrances, cafe entrances, student entrances, it becomes a little bit difficult for the public to know, where should I go when I'm coming into this building, right? So at Westland Grove City, we realized that, you know, that need. So we added that main entrance signage right on the, the spot where it should be, right? So the public now knows when I pull up to this building, this is where I should go if I'm coming as a visitor. Coming soon, this is kind of a rendering out of Franklin Heights. We're doing a very similar thing out there. Franklin Heights is, you know, even more unique, the way it's positioned. So this, we have some signage that will not only tell you, hey, this is the main entry, but also this entry is only for students within a certain amount of time. And this is not a public entrance to an school outlet. So there's some really integrated signage that we, we think will happen here within the next couple of weeks, maybe, maybe a month or so, that will kind of point all those folks in the right direction, and they won't kind of be wandering around wondering, where do I go? The Career Academy was a busy place this summer. Not only did it get the salon Phase 1 kind of upgrade, right? The renovation with Phase 2 to follow next year. We also did a kind of a facelift up front with that curb appeal kind of thought in mind. So we replaced 20 windows in this main entry area. We painted it, we power washed it. We also replaced a lot of carpet inside, brand-new carpet in the library, brand-new carpet in the tech area. You know, this building is, some of these buildings now don't seem like it, but, you know, they're getting to be two decades old now. So it was time for, for some uplift out there, and I think everything turned out great. And we're ready for Phase 2 in the salon tomorrow, or, sorry, tomorrow. Next time, not tomorrow. When it comes to giving your, your, your sites a fresh, fresh facelift, right? You, nothing gives you a bigger impact than a fresh lot seal stripe and, and, you know, that. I mean, you can see, you wouldn't guess that these facilities are coming up on 10 years old, you know what I mean? 10, 11 years old. So we, we redid all our Phase 2 elementary buildings from a lot perspective. You know, that's, any damaged areas were solved and replaced in crack fill, full lot seal, restriping of the lots and the playgrounds. That is JC Summer you see on the left, that is Finland, you see Finland Elementary you see on the right. We also did Garvey Dale Stiles, Bolton Crossing. And I think that's it. So those were all. And then next year, we will do the Phase 3 elementaries, and that's kind of in that cadence that we talked about earlier, right? Two years ago, we did the intermediates, so you kind of do that age, get that rotation down so that every so often, you're doing something so that you're never really behind the eight ball. You keep that, kind of that facility vulnerable. And that's my last slide. Any questions?
Not a question, question, but a comment this year. So last Friday, there was alum at the Westland football game. They were there because they were in town celebrating their 50th reunion. And they got to go in to Westland and take a look at the building. And they stopped because someone said, oh, this is Camille Peterson, the former member, and she lives in the area. But the alum were absolutely ecstatic and amazed at the age of the building, but how well the maintenance and upkeep it had on it. And they were like praising about how the, what it looked like before to what changes and little things were going now in the building. And so it was a couple guys, and we were talking for quite some time, and they were laughing at it because they were like, you're like this little short lady that knows stuff about beauty. I know! But they absolutely raved about Westland. And I did explain to them eventually, it will come down. And they're like asking me some questions about that. But they were impressed in 2025 at what the inside of that building looks like.
Yeah, we'll say one thing that came really, that was a positive outcome of, I think, this whole of, you know, let's make our sites shine, right? Was I think we got a sense of ownership from the faculty, right? From that being certified and classified, that they thought, you know, hey, maybe we can, you know, keep our sites looking at it a certain way. So, you know, I think we had some principal meetings where we talked about, hey, how can we create that sense of ownership? You know, it, it, you know, it takes, it takes the village, right? And, and I can honestly say I've seen a multitude of folks going out and waves and then getting little, you know, volunteer groups to go like, hey, let's, let's walk the far field and police that, you know. Maybe there's some stuff that we missed in, you know, from wintertime. And, and I think, you know, I think it's really come a long way. I personally see the difference. I hope you guys as well. I'm, I'm honestly pretty proud of it.
You should be very proud. You've done a lot of great work this year. And just a couple of things, the Welcome Center, all the work that you did, the exterior there, it looks amazing for all of our new families who come into the district and are registering, their kiddos. They want, you know, a welcoming building. Just with our schools, not only do we want a beautiful building and a welcoming space for our students, but we want our staff and our teachers to be proud to come to work and excited to come into their building and have ownership. I think this goes back to behavior piece as well. You know, if buildings are, you know, kept nice and it looks great, you're not going to want to destroy the bathroom. You're not going to want to, you know, mess things up. You have pride in your school, you have pride in your building. So I think all of these things, I love the, the main entrance from a safety and security standpoint. I know whenever I go to Franklin Heights, I'm always like, wait, which door? And I've been there many times. Because I'm like, maybe this one is open because it looks like a maintenance. So I think those things are really important for community members and just from that safety and security piece too, to know, you know, this door is not open. You got to go over here, that kind of thing. So excellent, excellent work. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm going to give a little thing too. I know Mr. Banks, when he, before he came to this district, was talking a lot about curb appeal and, you know, all his whole conversations with what you can do to buildings and ownership and everything. I won't give his speech again, but it was really amazing. And sometimes you kind of look at it and, you know, he had this idea. And he's like, well, what does that look like? Like, aren't we kind of already doing it? But like you said, when you take that step back and figure out like, oh, no, we can do these relatively small minor adjustments, and everybody's seeing, make that improvement. Like you said, it improves the morale of the whole building and everything. So the idea over a year ago that Mr. Banks was talking about and seeing it come to fruition now is really pretty cool. So thanks for making that happen.
Randy always said that most of the taxpayers never get inside the building. They just see it from the outside. So tell your guys, don't be cussing us. Thank them, seriously, thank them.
Oh, for sure. I have super idea. I've, I've shared that for sure.
All right. All right.
Well, I'm back. I won't greet you formally again, but it's a pleasure to be up here. You know, as, as we talk about the beauty of the buildings, we talk about the pride, we talk about growing kids behaviorally. I'm here to kind of give the, the annual health update on the overall health and growth of our academic achievements of the district. And much like going to my physical, we have a lot to celebrate and some things we still have to work on. So this year's state report card was released last week. And one of the things that I'm thrilled about is we kept a star designation for the fifth year in a row. It helps us kind of all stay centered on what we're focusing on. And therefore, while we were changing metrics every other month, it seemed like. There have been several things phased in over time, and this year is no different. This year, there's a new college and career metric that has been talked about for several years, but this is the first year we have a measure. I'll talk a little bit more in depth about it later. But I also want to talk about, by adding that, it shifted the weighted percentages. And so that'll come into play later as I talk about a hair that we missed. So next slide, please. Just to reorient you with the star system, those three stars right in the middle is the state's expectation. So when you nail three, you're right where you need to be. Four and five are obviously above. Two is slightly below, and we don't need to talk about ones because we don't have those. But that's not a place we want to be ever. Next. And just to reorient us, there are six categories. The achievement, progress. Achievement speaks for itself. Our students achieving at the highest level and performing. And then those tests are weighted so that we show that students are performing higher, gets a higher weight. And students below get a little bit less weight. And that's what they call a performance index. And that helps, helps us kind of equate or normalize the student performance throughout the district. Progress is how far you take kids from where they start. And I'll talk more about this one. It's a shining star in our cap. And how far you take them, we're really good at it. Gap closing, closing gaps among different groups of students so that we're performing for everybody at the highest level. The early literacy one, I have said three years, it's flawed. It continues to be flawed, but I have things to say. Graduation, obviously, how many kids are getting across that stage? We'll be back in June before we know it in our gowns. And the new one, the college, career, workforce, and military readiness, I'll talk a little bit more about that. And that all culminates in an overall star rating, which is the only one that can have half-stars, by the way. Everything else comes in whole-stars. So go ahead, and this is our report card at a glance. I'm very proud to tell you we have three stars in achievement this year. We met state expectations. That was a little bit tarnished last year. We only got the two. We missed it by a horsehair. But we bumped up with a lot of hard work, and achievement is up, and, and that we can be very proud. Let's talk about the early literacy two stars. I, I'm just going to name what it is. Here's the bottom line, what we already know. We have work to do with our youngest learners. Something, I cite this every year, but I think it's something we have to keep paying attention to. Dr. Gerard and I talk about this a lot. Excuse me. Two years ago, 38% of our kindergartners came ready to learn for kindergarten. Last year, 31. We declined almost nine points. We have less than a third coming ready. And the range on those buildings is we have one building in the district that almost 80% are ready. I call them starting up at the 25-yard line on the, on play. And we have one building less than 5%. They're in the bleachers. And we have one building less than five percent during the bleachers. And so when we talk about that progress measure in a little bit, they don't all need the same thing. We're all going to the same graduation stage, but we go at different rates and different times. The measure is flawed because everybody's using grapes, apples and oranges, I know I've talked with you about that before, on how they measure that. We could pick a really easy grape, but it wouldn't tell us the truth. What I do know for sure is we continue to focus to raise student achievement at the youngest levels. We know we have some kids struggling. I talked to Mr. Bozo a week or so ago and Mrs. Angelio Seal, I believe, we have more students, um, not potty trained that are in kindergarten this year than ever before. And what does that say to me? We just have more challenges that are coming for our families. Um, and with that requires harder work, deeper focus, and, and we'll continue at that. The other thing I want to say there, just as a kudos, as you remember, we're fully compliant this year with the science of reading, board adopted new materials, those were all in pilot and research last year. If I'm being very honest with achievement, I've done this thirty years now, typically when you institute new programming, you see dips. We held our own. And so to hold your own with new program, teachers teaching every day with old stuff and trying to learn new stuff, I, I actually was surprised. And so I, I don't think that's a bad place for us to be, that's particular juncture, particularly with kids coming with hormones. Moving on to graduation, this is a weird one, remember it goes in the rear, so those three shiny stars are from the class of twenty twenty-four. So it's, it's a year lags. So next year's report card will be the class that we just walked a state, the stages last June. Now, I told you last year, if nothing was crazy, we'd be getting the three stars. I'm gonna tell you again, if nothing gets crazy, we'll have three stars next year as well. So something to be very proud of, we continue to have the highest scores in the history of the district and that's with a lot of concerted effort, with a lot of adults and parents helping their children achieve what they want to achieve, so we're very proud of that. That gap, gap closing, we stay right at state expectations, that's really challenging, you know, between our special populations, whether you're gifted or you have a special need, um, or maybe a special group or E Ls is making sure they continue to grow and perform at the same rate as every student and we continue to work very hard at that as well. And the shiny star that I'm really proud of is we take the kids from the bleachers and we get them across that stage. Whatever you want to do in life, we want you ready to be able to do that. And we don't all start in the same place, but we're gonna get you there if you, if we work together. We are in the top eighteen percent, I'm gonna say seventeen point nine percent in the state of Ohio in progress. And I'm gonna tell you that right now I'm giving you the thirty-five thousand foot view of the district. Mr. Banks, I know, and, and me will be discussing with you some of the shiny, shiny things happening throughout the district at the building level as well that helped get us that four stars. But this is where we're all in the same team, we're all in the same direction, helping kids and for that we can be really proud. The college, career, workforce and military readiness, um, measure is designed in concept to measure how a district's doing to prepare kids for not only if you want to go to college, but also who's ready to go to the military and into the workforce. And that is a mission we have supported here for a long time. The bad part about the measure, if you look around, if you read the dispatch or you look around the outer belt, everybody just found out how we're getting measured on this, so everybody's like, huh, what? So we, we're starting with the two. Um, not where we'll end up or where we want to be, but two weeks ago, I didn't even know how we were calculating the measure. I'll also posit as we're figuring it out, there's new legislation already introduced to change the measure. So we'll see how this plays over time. What I do want to point out to you is this is gonna take time for us to see change and here's the why, it's measured like graduation. So those two stars are from the class of twenty twenty-four, that cohort. The class of twenty twenty-five that already walked across the stage, we're underway right now, working to clean that data because that report will close soon, that will report next year at this time. So that work's already been done, I can't change whatever, none of us can change what's already there. We are working to clean up the data sources however. For example, the state is polled that we have five military enlistments, we have way more than five. So we're working right now diligently before that closes to see triage one, are we pulling correct data to make sure it reports correctly? That'll close in the next year's score. Beginning in October, we'll start a full court press on, now that we understand how we get kids these points, what do we need, what, what's already working well and where we need to scoop up and create new opportunities for children so that we can, and students so we can have, um, a, a better outcome on this part of the report card. So I just say, it's gonna take a couple of years to, for that to, to move based on what we're starting this year, this year. And that leads us to something I think we should all be very proud of. We are meeting overall as a district, state expectations with the three stars. We are looking at the urban twenty-one, which is our comparison group, we sit right atop of it again. So when you look around the state, we're not the urban eight, we're not rural, we're a little bit of everything and so they put in this, in this bucket with the urban twenty-one and we're as high or about as high in every category as every district in that, in that group. Now, someone said to me, yeah, but you went from three and a half to three, you got worse. We didn't actually, we got better. The reason that we lost the half, you ready for this one? Six hundredths of a point, that's point oh six. And the reason that we did was even though our achievement went up, the distribution to the new measure pulled the weight out of the achievement, so had the last year's metric been there, we'd have had three and a half shiny stars. So we actually got better and only had three stars instead of three and a half, but certainly something not to shake our tail at and something to be very proud of. Next slide please. So what do we do now? Well, we continue focusing to grow students. Those students that maybe aren't quite ready up in the bleachers, we're gonna get them on the field, then we're gonna get them to halfway, we're gonna get them in the end zone, that's what we do. We'll be looking at building trends, buildings just got their final set of data today, so they're tearing in as leadership teams to say, what went well? What are patterns we see, what do we need to fix? The other weird part about this as an educator and Mrs. Liskin and I have had hours of conversation, she has great questions about assessment and how we measure children, this is sort of like a blood pressure cuff, right? You put it on once a year and then you come back a year later and see. Along the way, our teachers are measuring every day. And so, um, we'll be looking at those trends and, and the weird part about this blood pressure cuff is every one of the kids they had has moved on to somebody else. So it's looking at patterns and trends to then match with the classroom day-to-day data to see what can we do differently. We continue to strengthen our interventions, you heard about some of that behaviorally even. All of those things play in tandem, that when a child needs something, we design what they need and help lift them up. We're watching policy. I talked about the reading materials. I said to a couple of you, and I don't remember with whom I was speaking at the time, we've almost hit this on what I'm calling implementation fatigue. As adults, you can only take in so much stuff and there's just a lot of change our teachers are facing. It's not an excuse at all, but sometimes you, one of the colleagues I worked with over twenty-five years ago said to me, sometimes Brian, you gotta say no to good ideas sometimes. And it's kind of where we are, we need to roll what's working and spend our energy and kind of weed out some of the noise and focus so that we can create good learning environments, predominantly as Dr. Urban pointed out, adults to thrive and feel good about their work, but also children to have some predictability and, um, opportunity in that classroom. Continue to provide supports to remove barriers. I talked about the diapering and the toileting. There are real stories behind that, that's not a blame, it's just real. I, I can't tell you, I spent some time at the Aronis Center, I'm glad none of you walked in when I was at the welcome desk, because everything was, I don't know, I'll find someone to help you. But I smiled a lot, one lady told me I smiled really nice. But I say all that to say, those stories are unbelievable and ones that don't match the stories that I grew up with. But what I'm really proud of is we have care teams and social workers and teachers and guidance counselors who are rallying around these families to help get them out of the bleachers and on the field. And that's key. And I've already talked about my last bullet, um, or dot there, the, the new measure, we're gonna be doing a deep dive into what does this mean and it's not, it's not, I, I don't want to paint this as it's a points game, although some of it's gamifying, but it's uncovering what are we missing to get in front of students? What is it gonna take? And how do we prioritize this so that we create more opportunity than we already have for students? And so before, as we transition now, we're one of the few districts in the state of Ohio, or a handful I should say, that we are our own career tech planning district. So we have it right here and that's a great opportunity for many of our students. We have busted at the seams, right? And creating more and more opportunity. But our career tech, uh, part of the district also gets a report card that was released this week with much less press. And so Mrs. Galvin's here to help write a little bit about that for us.
Thank you, Dr. Bowser, and thank you all for letting me present and share about our career tech report card. I'm very excited to share that we received five stars this year for our career tech planning district, which is so exciting. Um, and it really is a reflection of the work, not only of the career academy, but really of the whole team. Um, because we have middle school C T E, we have C T E in the high schools, but it's also, um, building in grounds and the work that they do to make sure that our facilities have the equipment and all the resources that we need for students to be successful. It's all of the teachers and the academic skills. So this really is a, a district-wide celebration. So you can see, um, when we look at what's being measured, there are several things that are included on the career tech planning district report card. One of those are web exams, not everyone knows, but every single career tech course has a web exam that students take based on the content of that course. So if a student is in a two-year pathway, they actually take four different tests, um, that show their proficiency on the skillset they're learning. And that's what's measured in, uh, in our achievement measure. The other thing that's measured in there are end-of-course exams. So it's kind of a mixture between the skills that are measured on the web exams from the career tech courses and the end-of-course exams from the E L A two and the algebra and the government and the American history, all of those things are in our achievement measure. So some other things, we have graduation rates. When we're looking at graduation rates on the career tech, that's actually measuring any student that's taken two or more career tech courses and completed them, they're called concentrators. So when we're looking at the graduation rate on our report card, that's for students that have taken two or more courses. The other thing we're looking at is those post-secondary success measures, like how many of our students, we actually have to follow up with every single career tech student a year after they leave us. So we do that in a lot of different ways, our teachers work extremely hard to get that data and we ask them, what are you doing? You know, you've graduated, it's a year later, um, are you working, are you in post-secondary, are you in an apprenticeship? How many hours are you working? We even ask them how much, you know, are you making a living wage? So there are a lot of measures that go into that post-secondary, um, five stars. It's, it's a lot of work to follow that up and it's exciting to hear that our students are working or they are continuing their education. So that's just a reflection that they're using the skills that they're getting at the career camp. The other thing is the industry credentials and when we say industry credentials, those are credentials that actual members of business and industry have identified as being valuable. So they're saying if this student has this credential when they leave, they will actually be a leg up and they would have an advantage in getting hired in our business and industry. So part of what they look at is how many of our students have taken those tests and have passed them. An example would be like the certified nursing assistant, um, also like our cosmetology license, those are all industry credentials, so that's also measured. The college credits earned, again, sometimes I think it's, um, misperception that students that are in career tech don't earn college credits, that's absolutely not true. Um, the career academy is one of the highest amount in all of our district of students earning college credits embedded in our coursework, so the exciting thing is, it's measuring how many of our students are also earning industry credentials and college credits. Work-based learning is a huge piece of that. Um, as I've shared before, we have a lot of students that are out right now working in the industry, um, during the school day and getting that hands-on experience. And then also our career tech student organizations, that would be like our Business Professionals of America and our Skills USA, so when you hear about our students competing, that's also measured on here. Um, and then the C T E course completion, just making sure that they actually start the pathway and finish the pathway. So as you can see, um, for achievement, we earned four stars this year and then in the remaining categories, we earned five stars for an overall rating of five stars this year. So I'm just really proud of everyone's work on this because this is not my work, this is the work of all of the teachers, the administrators, um, middle school teachers, like it really truly is a district celebration, so I'm just excited to share that with you this evening. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
So before we take some questions, thank you Christine. It's just important to remember that this is the physical, there's a lot of work that happens the other hundred and eighty-five days and throughout the summer. And I put some of those up there, we did have twenty-seven military enlistments, so we'll get into the bottom of that. All the millions of dollars in scholarships, the credits earned to save families, all of these are metrics. We had twenty-one kids walk across that stage with not only a diploma, but an associate's degree. These are all metrics as it says and we can point to a lot of great things. So with that, um, on behalf of the, try to answer any questions you have or comments.
Um, I'm sorry, I have a question. When we talk about, um, state resolves, do, are we, are we pulling information just for our own purposes, our own results in terms of kindergarten-ready percentages, our graduation rate, our post-graduation, like kiddos that have post-graduation plans that aren't tied into, so that we can measure more, a little more accurately, I guess, than waiting for the state report card? Are we pulling these on a regular basis so that we know, for example, last year thirty-one percent came kindergarten-ready, when will we have that information to say, well, the rate was this year and we started?
It's a great question. It'll probably be, um, I'm guessing, late October to almost Thanksgiving because the teachers have to input the window, then the state has to take the assessment and then they somewhat norm it and then report back what the cut score is. So, um, there again, but what we do already know is we have diagnostics underway, teachers already are doing a battery of things to understand, this child's up in the bleachers. I'm sorry for the football metaphor, but it's football season. Um, and you know, so they're getting to work right away. What I'm talking about, yes, they are measures, I think it just speaks to the system as a whole, that our businesses K through twelve and some pre-K through twelve, birth to five, we're partnering with lots of agencies, United Way is one of them, working with partners around the county of what do we do to help remove barriers from birth to five so, uh, they're ready for kindergarten. I often say, this is our business. They've heard me say this a hundred times, if you bring them here, we know what to do. But from birth to five, I don't have a lot of influence, that's where we need help from our community and our partners and we found them, Dr. Gerard meets with the United Way quite often. And everyone's trying to chip away at this a little bit. So I hope I answered your question, but it is tricky because as you talk about, are we pulling this data? We're pulling lots of data. Sometimes what the report card pulls through what the state system's called E D S doesn't always match or we can't get our fingers on it exactly. And sometimes there are calculations behind because they're tied to a test that they'll take in April on two days. And so those are things that I wouldn't be able to get, I guess.
I, I think it's important to say and to address and to talk about because most folks in the community just wait for the state report card to come out and it doesn't always reflect.
Sure.
You know, the true numbers and it doesn't reflect how hard everyone's working, the teachers and the staff and everybody doing the testing and all that kind of thing, so I think it's important.
That's fair.
To address. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report, it's amazing, I always, I don't know how many times I've heard you give a report, but I'm always, always impressed how you deliver it too and all the information. It's great, it's enlightening and so excited to hear the improvements, fun to see improvements, right? That's, we want to see improvements every year and, um, figuring out, like you said, the new system they just had, the grading system, um, silly, but, um, it's interesting to see how you got, I mean, you guys are good, like you said, there's no ones on there, it was still a new thing, I mean, it's good, good, so thank you.
All right, thank you, Christine, thank you. Thanks to everybody for attending tonight. Moving on now for items for action under, uh, facilities development with Mrs. Peterson.
See Mark already led into it, talking about facilities. So the, only have one item to bring forward, um, and it is the, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing and approving a professional design services agreement with Shore, uh, Architects Incorporated for professional design services as a architect, uh, record for the district. I'm just gonna tell about the, the first clause of this. The Board of Education, Southwestern City Schools, of course, is planning the renovations and additions of other miscellaneous projects related to the next segment of the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, as well as general master facilities planning in the district. So, basically, in a nutshell, this contract is helping for us to be able to go into an agreement so that we can continue the works and progress of that. So, you guys have heard us constantly talking about next phases and what's coming up or what's the plan for, as Mark was explaining, what's the next upcoming renovations for buildings that's needed or updates and things like that. So, that is what this contract is for. After reviewing this one item, I move it for passage.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second? Thank you. Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale? Miss D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Siskini?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Moving on now for items for action under Personnel with Mrs. Martindale.
Thank you, Mrs. Bosso. For tonight, I just have two items for action that involve a total of 97 people. And this includes three certificated resignations, 94 certificated employments, 90 of which are supplemental. And having reviewed all of them, I would like to approach you.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
Second, Liskini.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Martindale?
Yes.
Miss Liskini?
Yes.
Miss D'Angelo Steele?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Bosso?
Yes.
Moving on now for items for discussion. If anybody has anything for discussion tonight?
I have two items.
All right.
The first one is one I know we brought up in the past about school board calendar coming up in November. Are we gonna, oh, like, I don't know if we need to have a formal motion to discuss or not, but we currently have one board meeting in November and it's on November 17th. And that's inconvenient because it's on the same evening as OSBA's conference. And I know there's a lot of events going on during that timeframe, so I would like to move that if that's possible. I don't know the exact procedure for meeting that date, if that's just a Garside thing or if you want us to...
You can tell us a different date or propose a different date.
Is that what I should, so should I, like, ask for a motion to talk about this? Get a second?
We don't have a board meeting we can just discuss.
Board meeting, discuss it.
For the public so that you know in advance.
Do you want to do that sooner than later? Because we have two meetings in October and then that's the next one, so.
I guess people could check their calendars and get with you and see when everybody's available to switch. If the OSBA thing is on that day.
Yeah. Thank you. So, there were that and Garsides?
I will put that out.
Okay. Garsides Department there. And then, the next item, I would like to move that the superintendent be tasked with gathering information and proposals from external vendors not currently contracted by the district to conduct a comprehensive safety audit for our schools. Given recent events and the upcoming construction of new buildings, this audit will help guide our safety focus in many of our future. I really do appreciate all the efforts that have been made so far in the district. I know you guys touched on a lot of things that are currently already happening, you know, even from previous years. You know, officers moving around the buildings more, doing more things, so I appreciate that. But I also believe that this additional step will provide valuable insight for all of us kind of moving forward with the new buildings and what else we can continue to keep improving on. So, I know if I get a second on this, then we can have a discussion this evening. And I know a lot of, when it comes to safety conversations, I know a lot of this is executive session content, but I'd like to open up to you guys.
One second.
Well, thank you.
Discussion on topic.
Would anybody else feel that an audit would be beneficial to kind of help give us that baseline? I guess, where are we and what are things that we can have for the next, you know, like I said, for the next building? When, I've never built a school building before. I know, like, you know, when we did negotiations, we had a lot of meetings pre, leading up to it. These meetings that we're having with the updates on our board goals and things like that, these meetings are really, I think, beneficial. And I think any information we can have is valuable. So, that's, that's my take on it.
So, just for clarification, we are wanting to do an audit of our current safety procedures in buildings before we start looking at potentially building another building to kind of anticipate what the needs are going to be so that we can build a building.
Yeah, like, kind of see what we have now, how it's working. I know I've done a lot of research on this myself. And when you, when you ask a company or organization, a lot of great companies do do them around here. And they'll basically do their standards, right? There's always the government standards, and then there's the standards that are beyond. And every year, after every unfortunate school shooting, after every unfortunate action that happens, these organizations and companies are constantly updating their priorities and their expectations of what a school building should look like and how the safety should be. So, and, you know, if there's something that we in particular want to know, they can, of course, always add that to their checklist to go through and see, "Hey, are we meeting these expectations of, you know, what the community wants or where are we with those?" So, it's just, it's a baseline.
So, are we asking, or are you asking for, like, to have the superintendent look into audit companies? Or you're saying there is a specific audit company to complete this? And is there a cost involved?
Right, and that's what I would like Mr. Banks to do would be the, I mean, I can, of course, gather information and share and propose it to everybody. You know, like I said, I've talked to two or three different companies already to get a ballpark to see if this is even something that our district can even do and afford, and it's definitely well within our realm. I think when it comes to safety and our students, I think you always have to be physically responsible, but at the same time, not be afraid of that bottom dollar. But, so I, I don't know. If it's okay with you, I think it'd be something that Mr. Banks could do. If he thinks that's something he could do is to gather information for us, kind of give us a base cost idea from different, I don't know, like I said, two or three different vendors and ideas of...
But then, a current safety audit for a school district does take place, right? We are, we have, we do have a current process that where we link with the local police department and sheriff's, sheriff department. So, you're trying to compare that to what they are doing?
Um, it's not a comparison. It's going to be above and beyond what they're doing here. If I remember wrong, was the, was the one, the, the safety procedures that were done, was that? Some of these things aren't shared publicly, right, for safety reasons? Correct. Okay. So, yeah, again, some of these things might need to fall under executive session content, but we kind of need some above and beyond what we're doing here locally. Again, I know that we've partnered with police officers and local law enforcement, which is wonderful. These folks are doing a great job of making sure we are ready for after an event occurs. I think it's been amazing. I know Mr. Deba has gotten a lot of information out there to the schools on the three processes and what you do and different things. However, and I've talked with police officers about this too. Nothing against the officers in the room, but their job is to respond to 911 calls, right? And Mr. Bosso, I've talked to you about this before too. It's in response to an action, right? Unfortunately, there's not a lot of preventative training that they do, right? They're not going to come to my house and say, "Hey, you know what? That grease is going to enter into a fire. You know, you need to be doing this. You need to stop this from happening." Or, you know, little, little things like that that add up in a district our size. I think a district our size to not have any third-party audits done, I think we're a little behind the eight ball there. Because it's a thing that people are doing nationally. You know, the, the folks, some of the folks I've talked with are national organizations, international some. And it's, it's scary, some of the things they go through and what they talk about. But when you, when you stop and you hear the conversations, it's pretty eye-opening, so.
Just curious, what is the ballpark on these companies that you've researched?
And you can all, again, it's with your, there's a wide range, right? I mean, like, with anything, you can do, it's going to, the lowest I've seen is 70,000. And obviously, you can go up from there. And so, after the audit, so the process would be, again, what, you can cater it to every building, right? Or every, every district. But the process is, you know, you have the audit, you tell them what you're looking for, they can tell you what they're doing. And then afterwards, they present you with, "Hey, you know, here's X, Y, and Z." Or, "Hey, this is amazing." You get those five stars and you're good to go. Or, there's little tweaks you can make. Or, it all depends on the district. I mean, you know, I've talked with folks before, you know, it's, there's little steps that you can take to prevent.
So, then I assume these companies would, let's say, you have a company, they come in, they take a look. The company would still then have to collaborate with our local police to come up with the intervention?
Not necessarily, no.
I mean, if you have a plan and they're just a company that's coming in to do that, our local police is the ones that is going to be. So, what I'm, I guess what I'm saying is if you select a company and you're going with them, they would do some collaboration with our local police who would be the ones that would be responding?
Well, so I guess that's if you, if we decide to do audit, I mean, it'd be the same kind of concept as a financial audit or curriculum audit. I would like to do a curriculum audit, but you guys are doing so amazing that, I don't know, I don't really, I'm not as hungover on doing curriculum audit. But you, it's an audit, so it tells you where you're at and where you want to go. And I think if there were procedures or there were steps and things that we need to do to improve, then they would say, "Hey, how would you like to do this? Here's our steps." We either, you know, you can collaborate with the local law enforcement, some folks do that, or you would, you know, seek outside companies. I know technology is a big thing with these. I know Mr. Meadows and I have, or we've had little conversations about the different items, technology-wise, Mr. Giedemann. We've all had conversations. So, when it comes to a safety audit and the safety of our buildings, it's not just what the police are up to. It's all-encompassing conversation. I know technology's involved with that. Technology, the, the stuff in the buildings.
I got you.
Just to give another set of eyes on our district.
Guess I'm just thinking, like, if you do an audit, if you do the audit, right? I'm trying to, what my question is, is we do the, let's say we did an audit, right? Who is implementing the results? They would have to collaborate. The purpose of an audit is because we want to see where we are and what's the outcome. Well, there's, now you got to say, "How are we implementing it?" So, that's telling me that we still are going to have to collaborate with our community, law enforcement, to implement what we want to see past that audit. So, that's why I'm asking this question because our law enforcement is the ones who will, once an audit is done, you got to have a, an end. So, we need to make sure.
To have a safety and security team.
Exactly. Who's going to implement, who's going to implement that? Yes.
A very thorough job and they do a lot of things. I think what Miss D'Angelo Steele is saying is she would like to see an audit just to see where we are with safety and security. You know, do we have the top of the line or do we have the bottom of the barrel? Are we somewhere in between? And what do we need to do as a district to make sure that our buildings and our kids are safe?
I'm just making sure that we are also taking into consideration. We, we can do, we can talk about doing the audit, but we need to also ensure that, like, my question would be, as discussion, then with our local enforcement to bring them in, law enforcement to bring them in and say, "You're going to be a part of the safety team if we come up with something that seems that we are needing to beef up our safety or take something out of our safety." Is this a collaboration that we explore, kind of saying, giving a heads up, if that makes sense? Like, this is something we're thinking about. I hear we're having a discussion, but also, they are the ones that we might potentially have to go to to enforce it. And so, the questions would be if they're open to implementing a company's safety plan that we select. But if that is something that, you know, we do, that's why I was just trying to comprehend. Like, I know what an audit is. I know what the steps are. It's just the purpose of an audit is because you want some end results, not once we get the results, who's implementing it?
Right.
That's, that's the pieces.
I think that's very valid. And I think when it comes to, again, we don't have, I think, obviously, yes, common sense would say, obviously, work with the police department. I know we have a great relationship with the Franklin County and Columbus and Grove City. It's all been amazing. I think that will continue. Their, their main job with the police departments that we have, though they're so wonderful, they are not in all of our buildings and they're not always there when incidences occur. So, the audit would give us an idea of what, what can we do as a school system to ensure our buildings and our staff are prepared and ready before the police officers get there? I think there always needs to be collaboration with everybody. I mean, I fully support our police officers and our sheriffs and everybody there. And I think from many that I've talked with, an audit is a great idea. I mean, I don't know the last time an outside audit has been done. I know, again, financially, there's audits done constantly. A security audit, I don't recall has ever been done. I'm not sure curriculum audit's ever been done in the district, kind of having that baseline. And like, again, Bowser, I look, everything you say, I say this all the time, but like you said, there's, there is a lot going on. There's so much happening and you kind of need to have that, definitely have that pause. So, by having that third party coming and doing this for us, it's not involving any of us that are already operating. So, I mean, it could be a great idea. It could be an awful idea, but it's one of those things where, you know, if Mr. Banks had the opportunity to gather some information and come back to us, I mean, obviously, there is a cap for reasonable assessments, right? I don't know. Even having this conversation's been really great because I know safety and security goes really far and means a lot for a lot of different people.
I think it's always a good idea to have a proactive approach and knowing where we are, especially as the board is making decisions, having all of the facts and figures in front of us to be able to have the discussions is important.
So, I guess the motion on the floor is to have Superintendent Banks look into three companies?
Yeah. Three or four companies.
And get an estimate on what an audit would cost us.
Yeah, would that, yeah, would that be okay with?
We can put it to a vote and we can go from there?
Okay.
I would say, I just want to repeat what, what the motion is. The motion is for Superintendent Banks to go out for requests for qualifications. Like, this is, he's trying to find some companies that do safety audits and get some ideas what the costs might be.
Yes. Find some vendors and get their proposal.
Safety audits for school districts.
Safety audits for school districts.
Report back to the board.
Lots of reports.
To clarify, this is facilities, safety audits. So, we want each school site evaluated, much like we did last year with the police and with our consultant.
Right, right. This is, yeah, let's go above and beyond, yeah, some more things. And again, in this evening's conversation, really brought to light even more, you know, even more areas where, you know, again, I appreciate what everyone's doing at the building level, but to kind of even have been someone mentioned tonight, like, we're doing more by having people walk around the buildings and checking doors, which is great, but, you know.
Does that mean what new technologies out there to?
New technologies that could be used. Yeah. And, you know, if we had some, if we had more information to back up ideas, or again, maybe, you know, an audit would show that this is amazing. And wouldn't that be great to have an audit done and they'll come back and say, "Man, you guys are amazing down here. You guys are getting it all done. You're nailing every single thing. Way to go. Can we bring you across the nation?" I mean, that's exactly what we want to have, right? Like, what is this district doing because now you're our new standard going forward? I mean, an audit doesn't mean anything negative. And, you know, we talk about this in PTA levels very often where you having that financial audit done, accounting every, every two years. Every time you get a new accountant, you have an audit, you just see where you're at. An audit isn't, it's not negative. We don't have to be, not, we're not, not negative about it, but...
Not for $70,000, but we have a significant amount of buildings. I, I'm curious to see what, what this would entail. This is, it's, it's going to be expensive. You ain't on the low end, I'll tell you now, though.
Right. Which that?
You're not on the low end.
Right. And which that, with that, that not speaks volumes too, right? Right, and which that, with that, that not speaks volumes too, right? I mean, talking about our large district and all the buildings, hey, are they, are they meeting community expectations for safety? And again, we, it, it should be a yes, it should be amazing and all good things, but creating that baseline, knowing where we're at would help with conversation. So, and I think it'd give us a lot of insight, again, to the, the new buildings and what we can do going forward, so.
I think it's a valid conversation.
And it, I don't think it's going to cost us much more to have Randy pull the information for us. So there's no, no upfront cost, right, Mr. Banks?
Correct.
So he can provide us information and we can be like, oh, okay, no, we're good. Or hey, you know what, let's, let's start here and see where we're going from there.
Okay, I picked something up today. It says it's recommended the Board of Education tasks a superintendent with receiving quotes from all sources for safety audits of the district's facilities. Does that sound pretty straightforward?
Yes. When you have a different facility, yes. Because that's going to encompass all facilities.
Does that catch the spirit of what you, what everybody's talking about?
I think it does, thank you.
Miss DeAngelo Steele made a motion and Mr. Bosso seconded it. Local call. You?
First.
She's going to say something else.
No.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes.
Mrs. Martindale. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Any other items for discussion?
I just have one more thing I wanted to say. The stage is still in the room. Hi. Yeah.
Congratulations to our Executive Director of Middle Braids, Giffen and Testing, Dr. Cheryl Spain, who has been named to the top twenty, or the top fifty women leaders of Columbus List for 2025.
All right, see no more discussion. I move, it's recommended that we go to executive sessions. Recommend the Board of Education adjourned to executive session in accordance with policy 0166 to discuss security arrangements, emergency response protocols for the school system, to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of public employees, and to prepare for conduct or review negotiating or bargaining sessions with public employees. Can I get a motion to move that forward? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Second?
Second, Liskini.
Thank you, Ms. Siskini. Local call. Mrs. Martindale.
Yes.
Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Ms. DeAngelo Steele.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso.
Yes. We don't expect any more action going on after executive session, but you're more than welcome to stay. Thank you for being here. Thank you to everybody that presented this evening.